All right, we are ready. Let the October 2020 Brookhaven Borough Council meeting come to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, and justice for all.
Terry, do you have the list for the the people who passed away?
I'm reading it right now. I had to fix it.
I'm sorry. Just checking.
Please join us in a moment of silence for the following deceased residents for the month of September 2020. Raymond Teeny Senior, John Sidner, Charles Hollenbach, Roland Wright, Robert St. Clair, and Eileen Gibson. Thank you all. Mr. Willward, will you give us a roll call?
Sure. One second, please. Okay, I'll start the roll call. Mr. Heller? Mrs. Fuchs? Mrs. Heller?
Present.
Ms. Leslie is?
Ms. Leslie is excused. She may be on leave.
Okay, Mr. Vasquez?
Present.
Ms. Suiki?
Present.
Mr. Pappas?
Mr. Pappas is here. We can see him on video.
Okay.
I am here, John. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Wills?
Here.
Mr. Catania? Mr. Willward, I'm here. Chief Montella?
Here.
Chief Sedley?
Present.
Thank you very much.
Are you folks hearing feedback when I speak?
No.
No.
Not at all?
No.
All right, I got a text saying I'm feedbacking.
They're good.
Someone's feedbacking. Okay, no big deal. Let's go to the first round of public discussion. Is there anyone for public discussion? Please unmute yourself if you'd like to speak. Public discussion going once, going twice. First round of public discussion is closed. Thank you. Mr. Montella? Chief Montella, sorry.
Thank you, Mr. President. Brookhaven Fire Company's fire report for September 2020. Three fire incidents, nineteen non-fire, twenty-nine calls for mutual aid, six drills, a total of fifty-seven fire calls for the month, four hundred and ninety for the year. We had no loss on structure or contents in the borough this month. We've had a million fifty thousand dollars of property endangered in the borough for the year. No firefighter injuries or civilian injuries. Our manpower status was fifty-seven calls, average of fifteen firefighters, seven hundred and thirty-seven hours. Been in service for five thousand six hundred and fifty-five hours so far this year. Six training sessions, twenty-six average firefighters, three hundred and sixty-eight hours logged for the month, nineteen hundred and forty-seven for the year on training. Following incidents in Brookhaven Borough, we had two building fires in Brookhaven Borough, one at Trimble Run Condos, Unit K-19, and another house fire at 161 Trimble Boulevard, which ended up being outside shrubs. We had a gas leak inside the Stonehill Apartments in Unit H-22, a CO leak inside at Traditions at Everly Creek, Unit 623, and we had six motor vehicle accidents, 5,000, 5,075 Edgemont Avenue, 5,000 Edgemont Avenue, 352 and Whitley Road, Dutton Mill Road and Creek Road, Whitley Road and Schola Road, and 352 and Maple Road. We had assisted Chester Township Fire Department on a building fire at 5 North Thomas Drive. We assisted the Upland Fire Company on a building fire at Crozier Hospital, assisted Middletown Fire Company on a building fire on Meadowcroft Lane, assisted Aston Township on a building fire at the Bachman Buildings at Newman University, and assisted the Garden City Fire Company on a building fire at 310 Media Parkway. We also assisted Chester City Fire Department on building fire at Aaron's Way and 314 East 24th Street. Also provided coverage while they operated on a two-working building fires. Our monthly training was instructor came in, taught us knots, ropes, and rigging. We had load testing of our hose and our nozzles. We did hose packing on attack lines, ladder operations, and victim rescue. Our COVID-19 updates were submitted to council. We did have two confirmed positive cases from both Riddle Hospital and Crozier Hospital. All our personnel were notified, and both of those transports were out of long-term facilities. And that concludes my fire report. My ambulance captain did not get my ambulance report to me, so I do not have that report tonight. That's it, Mr. President.
Thanks, Chief. Mr. Wills, give us the solicitor's report, please.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President, and ladies and gentlemen. I can report number one. Is the issue concerning the present mayoral vacancy in the borough? As Borough Council is aware, and perhaps will update the public, that by correspondence dated September the 24th of 2020, Mayor Hess of Brookhaven Borough submitted a letter of resignation as mayor, with his letter making the resignation effective September the 30th of 2020. And therefore pursuant to Robert's Rules of Order, it would be procedurally appropriate at this time that the borough make a motion to accept with deepest regret the mayor's resignation. So I think that should be in the form of a motion. If there's a motion and seconded, I think council ought to appropriately vote on that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, your resignation there again is accepted with deepest regrets, and our best wishes for your future endeavors.
Thank you very much. Hold on a minute, Jay. I have a couple people to mute. Mrs. Suiki's misbehaving again. There's someone else. Okay, go ahead.
Secondly, I've been involved in a number of slip and fall cases that the borough has become involved in here. I have worked with the borough's insurance company and the insurance company attorney who's been assigned to provide defense and identity coverage for both of these cases. I remain cautiously optimistic that the borough will eventually be dismissed named defendant on both of these cases. It is my considered opinion that the borough does not have liability in either of those cases. Third issue, last week, I was pleased to present a First Amendment seminar to our police officers at the municipal building. That was a very well-attended seminar, and I believe the officers fully understand some of the new issues coming down from some of the most recent Supreme Court rulings on some of the issues that are affecting law enforcement, not only here in the borough but throughout the Commonwealth. So I'm pleased that that was a success. Lastly, on my report just concerns the property at Marshall Road. This is a property that has multiple violations of the internationally Property Maintenance Code. Earlier today, I received photographs of that property depicting the ill state and the condition of the property, which I will be attaching to my pleadings. We will be asking for relief and preliminary enjunctive relief in the Delaware County Court of Common Pleas. And again, I remain cautiously optimistic that the borough will be successful in that endeavor. The other issues I've addressed in my report, I have no other action items for Borough Council here this evening, and that is my report, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Wills. There is no mayor's report this month. Chief Sedley?
Good evening, folks. For the month of September, Brookhaven Police were assigned 506 cat assignments through DOTCOM. Noteworthy incidents are listed below. We had one aggravated assault, three simple assaults, one death investigation, five retail thefts, three other type thefts, and one attempted theft, and four fraud reports. Four criminal mischiefs, two disloyal conductors, five harassment complaints, one terroristic threats complaint. Thirteen suspicious conditions were investigated. Twenty-six disturbance. We responded 26 disturbances or domestic disputes. We investigated 12 alarms. We responded to 10 hazardous conditions or fire company assist calls. Took 20, responded to 22 vehicle accidents, 23 assist other departments. In total, 10 adults were arrested in the month of September. 16 citations were issued or filed. 12 warnings were issued. Total loss to victims for theft amounts to approximately $4,316 in recovery of stolen items amounts to approximately $216. For the month of September, we had a couple protest incidences that they weren't well and peaceful. For administrative, all officers are utilizing their personal protective equipment and staying healthy with this COVID-19 pandemic. For interviews of new applicants, 11 applicants have been preliminarily interviewed for the position of part-time police officer. After initial interviews, eight applicants have been invited to continue with formal interviews this week coming up. I have addressed a few minor personnel issues during the month of September to improve patrol, improve officer safety, efficiency of the, improve efficiency of the department and relations with the community. For training, we had a lot of training in September. Officer Wetton conducted firearms qualification and training for officers Jenkins, Tuttle, August, and Eastman. Officers Barth, Wetton, Duff, and Eastman attended a four-day training seminar to enhance skills in interviews, field interviews, and deception detection. In-service training was conducted in September for use of force, which includes training and certification with taser, pepper spray, and baton. All officers as of now are certified and carry the taser on patrol. Certifications will be completed in October for remaining officers for baton and pepper spray. When all said and done, all officers will have every force option available to them, and it will be part of their uniform. It will be required to carry it at all times when on duty. And again, reiterating what the solicitor said, training was conducted with the solicitor for the entire department on First Amendment issues and summary offenses. Officer Wetton also attended 16 hours of training with SWAT. In total, approximately 200 main hours of training was received by the department members during the month of September. This also include, includes continued education training that is required by the state. For October, one officer is enrolled and scheduled for active shooter response. One officer is what was enrolled in rifle instructor for the department, but that class was canceled by the NRA due to COVID. Same issue with de-escalation training that was scheduled. That's been pushed back because of COVID until at least November. And then also, there was a handgun shotgun instructor development school that was attempting to send two officers to. That's again been canceled and pushed back because of COVID. For moving forward, as far as going back to use of force and having more force options available, the department is going to convert our shotguns to beanbag shells only. It's just another less-than-lethal option available to our officers. The beanbag rounds are a 12-gauge shotgun shell that contains lead pellets and cotton wrapped in a ballistic fiber sack. The purpose of the beanbag shell is to deliver an impact comparable to a heavyweight boxer's punch that will stun or disable a dangerous person in unique danger circumstances. This will add another layer of force available to the officers that are less than lethal. It would also improve public safety and officer safety due to safe distance that force can be deployed. As far as community relations, there's some ideas in the works with the community. We have school back in session now, starting starting this week. So be careful with traveling through school zones. You'll see children now traversing to school. And lastly, I forgot to put on my report. Officer Kyler and I attended Citizens Crime Commission last Wednesday, where we were awarded outstanding police performance for the entire region for 2019, for events in 2019 related to the Walgreens robbery. And that concludes my report.
Congratulations, Chief.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Chief, I have one question for you.
Go ahead, Mr. Vasquez.
For the firearms training, has that all been rescheduled yet, or are you still awaiting the?
For the rifle and handgun shotgun developing, development school? It's, it's just, it keeps getting canceled. They'll schedule, hoping that a miracle happens, and then, you know, they realize they, you know, it's not convenient with COVID. So they just cancel the class, but there's future offerings. I'm just going to simply wait until COVID is resolved because they keep pushing.
If you'd like, I might have another alternative. I'll talk to you later about that.
Okay. That'd be excellent.
All right, thank you.
All right. I believe that's it for me.
Thank you, sir. Mrs. Ford just, just popped on. Would you like to give the school board report?
Sure. Thanks for having me.
All right, go ahead.
Yeah. With today, we we welcomed all of our students back. I'm happy to report as part of our phased reopening from virtual to hybrid. Today was our first day. It was opening day. We welcomed Cohort A, students in kindergarten through second grade, and Cohort A consists of students' last names A through K. Tomorrow, we will welcome the second cohort back into our building of students in kindergarten through second grade. And then next week, we will do the same with the two cohorts. We have Cohort A and Cohort B. Essentially, half of our students in the building each day. Cohort A will start next Monday, 3:00 to 5:00. Cohort B will start Tuesday. It really was a terrific day. It was great to see all the kids back in the building. We have all of our safety protocols in place. We took, you know, spent a lot of time this summer with a lot of safety teams at the district level, just ensuring that, that we were prepared essentially for this day. And, you know, the kids came in and we practiced all the safety protocols, masking, social distancing, hand sanitizing, sanitizing the buildings, sanitizing the playground, sanitizing all the components that we know we need to do to mitigate, you know, any, any chance of, that we can do to possibly not transfer, you know, anything from student to student, and we'll continue those efforts. We had a lot of virtual happenings that happened as well this past month. We, we continue to do all of our virtual events that we have. We did Virtual DOT Day, which celebrates, which celebrates making your mark on the world. We did Virtual Pin Wheels for Peace, celebrating international, International Peace Day. We had Virtual Back to School Night on September 17th. So we had a lot of virtual, but today we welcomed kids back into the building. We also have students who are, many of our Coburn students are also in our cyber program, and they continue to be part of our Coburn, Coburn community too. So all the events that we may be having, you know, coming out with our PTLs and things of that sort, we're going to invite all of our kids to the events. We won't be having any assemblies, large in-person events, but we are planning some virtual events or some events that we can absolutely practice social distancing. So look for that. It's going to be a lot of fun. It was a really terrific day today, and I didn't know if anybody had any questions about what's happening at the school level. I know I popped in and, you know, the, there's a lot happening over in our building now. So it's great. It's great to, it's great to have everybody back in again.
What percentage of students are cyber? Or if you don't know, is there a?
I don't know. It's a, it's a small percent. Not a large percent. It's a small percent. I don't have that. I can get that number for you.
No, you don't. No need. I was just, I was just curious.
Yeah. Anybody else have a question?
Someone have a question?
Yep, it was fantastic day. So it was great. It's great to get all the kids back in and get everything, get everything moving again in person. They did a phenomenal job today, coming in and really just doing all the things that, that they need to be doing. We did a lot with our PBIS, which is helping them by modeling everything that needed to be happening throughout the day, and they, the kids were just fantastic today. So it was a terrific day at Coburn Elementary School. And again, if you want to see all the great events that are happening, just follow us on Twitter, and you'll see things that are happening daily in our classrooms. It's a nice look into the school to see what's happening daily in our classrooms.
Thank you, Ms. Ford. It's good to have you back.
Pardon me?
I said, "Thank you." It's good to have you back.
Yeah, it's great to be back.
And good luck.
Thank you. It was a great day, so I'm looking forward to it. I'm really happy to be back, and I'm happy that the kids are back. It really was a terrific day today. So it's nice to get a little bit of normalcy back for our kids, so thank you.
Go to the council reports. I have Ms. Leslie's report, who is absent tonight. She notes that the shred event is scheduled for 10:24 from 9:00 AM to 12:00 noon in the Borough Municipal Center parking lot. And again, no electronics are being accepted until further notice. Another reminder about hot loads for trash. She's posted, I'm assuming she means on Facebook and the websites. I'm reading this as it was given to me. No radiation, ration, trash, chemo patients. Separate any trash containing body fluids or any kind from the rest of the trash. Leave it sit outside in a separate container for a week in the open air, then bag it up to be disposed of. Hope that made sense. Going to my report. We do have, we posted, I think Mr. Wills touched on it. We advertised a special meeting to appoint the new mayor that will take place next Wednesday, October 14th at 7:00 PM in the Municipal Center Gymnasium that is open to the public with social distancing guidelines in place. We have three executive sessions to announce, 9:15, 20, and 9:22, 20, both 6:30 to 8:30 PM. Both were personnel meetings, and we had the mayoral interviews. We had all three candidates interviewed yesterday, 10:04, 20. That was 3 o'clock till around 4:30. I also need a motion to approve the minutes for the September 14, 2020 council meeting, please.
I'll make the motion.
Do you have a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. I need a motion to remove the president of the rec board for cause.
To move.
You taking the motion?
I'll second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
There's opposed?
Opposed.
Mr. Willward, will you give us a roll call?
Miss, Mrs. Fuchs?
No.
Mr. Heller?
Aye.
Mrs. Heller?
Aye.
Ms. Leslie, she's not here. Mr. Pappas?
Aye.
Ms. Suiki?
Aye.
Mr. Vasquez?
Aye.
The eyes have it five to one.
Yeah, the eyes have it five to one.
Please note that this individual is removed altogether from the rec board. This is not a demotion, not a strip of title. They're removed altogether. Thank you, council. That is all I have. Mr. Wiki?
Yes, thank you. I do want to make a motion to approve the bills for October. And the general fund, the total for the general fund is $42,090.42. The road fund is $131,715.3. The sewer fund is $9,257.43. So I want to make that motion to approve the bills.
I'll make the motion. I'll make the motion for approval.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any questions? Motion carries.
Okay, the next motion I have is we were notified by the Borough Parkside that they would like to purchase, as they usually do, salt from us during the winter months. And the most, my motion is to allow them to purchase our salt from the borough at the cost that we have expended to purchase it. So that's the motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, any questions? Motion carries. Thank you.
Okay, the next motion I have is the borough is going to be moving some offices, and in order to do that, they received a quote from Mac Flooring, and the bid is $7,550 to do the carpeting in the offices before they move, we move the offices, hopefully this month before the bad weather comes. So I'm going to make the motion to accept the bid from Mac Flooring.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, any questions? Motion carries. It should, it should be, it should be stated that the, we are moving the treasurer's office to the current council president and office manager's office, moving the office manager to the treasurer's office, and combining the council president and mayor's office. And we will redo the flooring, which, or the carpeting, which is, I believe, 21 years old before we make this move. Good time to do it. Thank you, Janice.
Well, the only other announcements I wanted to make is next week, Public Works, we're going to have a meeting with Public Works, the engineer, Mr. Willward, and Delilah and myself in order to go through the preliminary changes they need for next year's budget. The following week, I'm going to have an interim organizational meeting with the Budget Committee to try to get the budget in organized shape in order to present it to council in November. So John Willward will be notifying the members for those two meetings. Thank you.
Thank you, Janice.
I'm sorry, I have a question for Janice about the budget.
Yes.
When do you need to know for this year, all the money that we're going to be spending? Because there are two items that are outstanding still for the rec board, for softball and for baseball. When do you need to know the, for the funding to make sure that it's hit this budget and not carried for next budget?
As soon as possible.
Okay.
It would be helpful. Just get it into Delilah if you can this week, if you can.
Okay, okay.
Sherri, are you talking about the shed?
I'm not talking about the shed, no.
Okay.
That was suggested for possibly next year.
All right, very well.
Ms. Leslie is absent. Miss, any other questions for Janice? All right, Ms. Leslie is absent. Mr. Pappas?
Thank you, Mr. President. The workplace safety, there was a workplace safety meeting that occurred in September, on September 29th, real brief. Custodian Harry is still sanitizing the borough access areas on a daily use. He's also installed a, I believe, two of them, two-mounted temperature detectors at different places for the public access to the borough building. And what it does, it's actually measuring your temperature as you just walk up to it. So it's kind of a thing that's mounted on a wall where you don't have to touch it, but it'll give you a temperature reading like we see in most of the COVID-protected public spaces. The Public Works Department talked about the lock change of security for the, some of the buildings. Athletic buildings are located at the parks. This will be coordinated with Mrs. Heller regarding the lock changes for the upcoming season because of the winter, winterization programs that they have. Three of the employees committed, completed a two-hour online service training for Swiftwater awareness. I think that was in connection with the fire chief, uh, that had promotions on, uh, the fire company. Uh, Mr. Willert also acquired a new, uh, ID forms for, uh, employees that are hurt as a result of workman's comp claims. This was also extended, uh, to the firefighters that are hurt on official business. And, uh, another good note, uh, is that no, uh, vehicles owned by the borough were involved in any type of accidents. That's completion of my reports. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mrs. Heller?
Okay, so I have two motions. Um, the first motion is going to, um, add, this is for the rec board, I'm sorry, to add Robert Walters to the rec board. Rob was, um, an actual alternate, but now is being moved up as, as full member. So I just need to make a motion. This was discussed in the July, um, rec board meeting. However, we never actually made the motion. So it was requested that we make the motion. So.
Make the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Thank you.
So the second motion is for, um, for Mary Ann Dougherty. She was also an alternate on the rec board. Um, she is to be moved up to full member. Um, so I just need to make that motion as well.
Who's taking the motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And that's all I have.
Thank you.
And that's all I have for right now.
Does that conclude your report?
That's your address.
Correct.
Mrs. Fuchs?
Thank you, Mr. President. The ordinance committee met on Thursday, September 17th. The welcome packet will be finalized mid-October. Once it's finalized, we'll make all the copies and get them out to where they need to be. We continue to work on the food truck ordinance as well as the application for a food truck. Um, and I did want to let everyone know that the ordinance committee will not meet this month. Um, I'm not able to hold the meeting this month, so we will, um, confer through email. Um, the tech committee will meet, um, on the eighth. And community news, um, trunk retreat will be held for Brookhaven Borough Children, 12 and under on Halloween Day from 3:00 to 5:00 PM at Coburn Elementary School parking lot, and it will be a drive-through this year. Please send registration requests to Mike Arby via email at web19013@aol.com. Please include full names of adult and your, the child or children as well as the address, make and model of the car and the plate number. One fact per car and registration ends on October 16th. Children in costume, please. Because we aren't having trunks, candy donations are needed. So if you're able to donate candy, there is a bin at Borough Hall. Um, please feel free to go there during normal business hours and drop off candy. If you're not able to do that during normal business hours, contact Mike Arby at the email address that I, um, specified earlier. Um, let's see, the rec board, um, will be, will reorganize at their next meeting to be held on October 29th. Uh, if interested, please, for alternates, please send your resume to the Borough Office, care of the Recreation Board. We announced at the last council meeting, actually the last two council meetings, that Brookhaven will have its holiday parade on November 21st. Due to COVID-19, it will be scaled back and there will be some changes to the format. So please stay tuned for additional information. That's all my report.
Thank you, Mr. Vaskus.
Good evening, Brookhaven and Mr. President. Thank you for the, uh, September 2020 Public Works report. I have good news. Our sewer jet trailer should be arriving next week, fingers crossed. Uh, the Public Works Department should be receiving training from the vendor on how to properly use the machine. And hopefully we have no issues with the machine going forward in the future. Uh, I'm very excited for this because we've been reaching out to outside contractors to supply our need while our machine was down. So I'm happy to say that this machine will be back in our service and, you know, wherever, wherever we can utilize this machine, we will be able to. Uh, next I also have, we had a few reports of sinkholes. One was at 220 Morris Ave. There's a sinkhole on under sidewalk. Uh, Public Works went out, they die tested it. This is an issue with the homeowner, not with the borough. There was another sinkhole issue with, uh, I'm sorry, uh, my notes are a little smudged. Spilled water on them earlier. Uh, they, we, we die tested a sinkhole at, uh, 302 Scola Road for Bob Grant. I do not have the results of the findings from the Public Works Department. Um, I can get back to us later, the, the borough leader with, uh, those results. The next one, uh, the sinkhole was inspected at Whitley Road. Mr. Catania knows about this one, uh, that the reports were forwarded to him. Uh, we inspected the head wall at the Borough Hall retention basin at Cambridge Road. Uh, our findings were reported back to Catania Engineering. There's a crack in the center. Public Works fixed the crack. So that should have remedied that issue. Now on to our parks. The scoreboard project was completed at Sampson Park. There was a, uh, electrical junction box that was damaged at Durkin Field along where the scoreboard was. Public Works went out and remedied that issue. Uh, normal building checks went on at Memorial, Sampson, Eaton and Durkin Parks. Winter maintenance will now start this month for our parks. We will go around winterizing all the parks, making sure we don't have any leaking issues due to freezing pipes this winter. I hope, uh, you know, we can avoid that this year.
I hope so.
Wood chips were all installed along the, uh, walking trail at Eaton Park and in the playground. Equipment area at Memorial. One picnic bench was repainted at Eaton Park due to some, uh, illicit, uh, graffiti that was, uh, added to that. So that is now repainted and back in service. We added trash cans to Memorial Park. Uh, this kind of goes along with what I mentioned to Sherry earlier. We were, Public Works team was looking for possible prices on a shed and batting cages for Dirk and Field. Uh, this is still in the works. Nothing set in stone. This is just, uh, exploratory at this time. Grass cutting and trash removal in the parks, uh, is still going on. The grass cutting is slowing down with the change in the season. Uh, one swing was repaired at Sampson Park. It was, uh, damaged. So, uh, the Public Works team went out and fixed that for us. Now just a, a little general coverage of what the Public Works team did this month. They planted flowers and mulched Camber, Cambridge Island. Weeded and mulched the butterfly garden and in front of Borough Hall, the police station and the court. There was a down tree that was moved for the police department at Dutton Mill and Lincoln. There was a call to check on a down tree at Trimble and Bridgewater, Bridgewater Road, and, uh, that was taken care of. Uh, the Public Works team went around, checked for weeds and brush growing around the, in the streets at Hilltop and Forest View. That issue was addressed. Public Works pumped out the water pit at Borough Hall due to the request of Harry. Uh, there was a demonstration for a bucket truck for the borough to utilize, uh, via the Public Works team to help with, uh, tree cutting, gutter cleaning, banner project. There, there's a, there's a number of issues that we could, this, this bucket truck, uh, will be used for. Uh, Altech came out for the demonstration. And our, Sean Guthrie and Dave Evans both attended this along with Terry Heller. I think George was there as well. I'm not sure. Just to see what the possibilities could be for the borough if we had this bu- bucket truck in our, uh, on our fleet. The talks are still going on on whether or not we'll move forward with this. Uh, so that is that for now. Six potholes were filled. Four bags at a hundred and forty-five pounds. The total year to date is eighty bags with four thousand pounds. There were fourteen new street sign designations. There were six new traffic safety signs that were added. The storm sewer drains were cleaned throughout the borough. The Public Works team fixed wooden railings around the, uh, bar screen, installed and repaired a few hero banners, delivered five recycling cans to several residents, answered twenty-two PA one-call tickets. The year-to-date on that is five hundred and fifty-five. And, uh, the tree and branch limb collection has started. So if you have any branches you need collected, please call the Borough Hall. The Public Works team will come out and they'll collect those branches for you. Also, I wanted to make a reminder that we are looking for two seasonal employees for the leaf collection and potential of snow removal. So if you are interested, please drop your resume off at the Borough Hall. It'd be much appreciated. That is my end of the, uh, end of the Public Works report. For the zoning hearing board, they did not meet this month. Although we do have one vacancy, I would like to post the, uh, job possibly in the spirit this upcoming week. I'd like to make a motion for that.
So moved. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any questions? Motion carries. Thank you.
And, uh, also I wanted to say that, uh, thank you to Matt Stone for stepping in and helping out the zoning hearing board. You know, with, uh, taking the role that he has, has done to basically be there in person to interpret what the zoning hearing board would wish to be done in person. Because the zoning hearing board members are not comfortable with meeting in person for the meetings. So, uh, thank you, Matt Stone, and thank you, uh, everybody with the zoning hearing board.
And you should note that Matt Stone did that free of charge.
Yes.
I know we were questioned for handing a job out to Matt Stone, which is kind of ridiculous, but he did it free of charge.
That is very appreciative to the borough.
Yes, we appreciate it.
That is the end of my report.
Thank you. I thought it was Vaughn Donaway's report for a minute. You went so long, but thank you, Mr. Vaskus.
Sorry, it was a long report.
I'm just playing with it. Mr. Catania?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just, just two quick things tonight is the first one is, um, PICO Green Regent Grant. This is an annual grant that's, uh, provided by PICO Energy. It's a ten thousand dollar grant requiring a fifty, uh, an equal match, and it's basically for passive recreation. Um, at council's, uh, pleasure, I would ask them to authorize submission of the application and to select the project to apply for. Two projects were, were thrown around at, at the workshop meeting. The one was, uh, the walking trail behind the, uh, piece of property, uh, at Durkin Field. And also it was, uh, improvement of the, the, uh, the new, uh, park on Arlington Avenue.
The motion is required, correct?
I wanted to.
Janice, do you have a question?
No, I wanted to talk about the issue of passive recreation for a moment.
Go ahead.
I bet a year, I bet a year ago, Gary, before he retired, he, he and I discussed, there's pockets of land that we own in the borough, which we actually could make little parcels of passive recreation. We're doing it at, council discussed two years ago about doing it at Arlington. We, we own the lot, so we're going to put boxwoods around the perimeter so the neighbors don't encroach on our property. We have two, um, of those benches at the borough garage. And we want to put some shade trees and some azaleas so that when people are walking in the borough, they're able to sit down. Or when you're walking your dog and you just need to sit down, you'll have a place periodically. So I'm going to try to explore that, get the addresses and then give it to Mr. Catania, because maybe we can apply. If we have four or five, I think we have four or five, and maybe we can get the grant. We would pay half and, you know, the grant PICO pays half.
Sure.
So I'll work with Mr. Catania with that. I just wanted to give you that.
Thank you, Janice.
Thank you. There were, we have.
Can you, Mr. Catania?
Do you still need the motion, Mr. Catania?
We would need, we would need authorization to submit the application.
Who's taking the motion?
I'll take the motion.
Second. Second.
All in favor? Any additional questions? All right, motion carries. Thank you.
And the second thing is, uh, we mentioned the workshop meeting as well. Borough was notified by the state Department of Island Protection of some, uh, chapter called the Chapter 94 violations, uh, at the sewage treatment plant. We're in the process of, of gathering information. We're required to submit a corrective action plan within 90 days of that notice. We have a meeting with the contract operator and one of our consultants, um, this Thursday at three thirty, three forty-five at the plant to get a, get a plan in place. We'll bring, I'll bring that back to council next month.
Somebody ought to be there to see what's going on.
Yeah, I'm, I'm going to be there, Janice.
Thank you.
And that's all I have.
Someone doesn't whisper low enough. Mr. Catania, is that it?
That is all.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Leslie, are you on?
Yeah, I'm on.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening, council. Good evening, Mr. President. Just a couple of things. Uh, CO inspections are ongoing. I think we have one this Wednesday. Hard, hard finally settled up. When the fire prevention stuff was ordered, be delivered this week to the firehouse. Uh, we do have some fire prevention activities coming up this weekend also. So that's the end of my report. Anybody got any questions? Janice? Okay.
Hold on, Janice may have a question.
No, you, you have all the, all the paperwork, not paperwork, the children's materials for trunk or treat. I just, I knew you were going to handle it.
We'll be handing out stuff. We got some things lined up for them.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Mr. President. Everybody have a good evening.
Thanks, sir. We have the Board of Health report. Mr. Hampton does not use Zoom. I did neglect to add that, uh, we had a, an executive session scheduled for immediately after tonight's council meeting. That has been canceled and we're going to consolidate it, consolidate that into a meeting, uh, next week sometime. It was, uh, a meeting to discuss the bucket truck in, uh, I spoke to Ms. Sewicki and we're going to, we're going to move it to the, uh, the, a meeting next week with Mr. Catania Public Works, after, and I believe Mrs. Fuchs, I think, anyway. I hope I got that. Delilah, okay. I, I know I forgot someone. And also, uh, I didn't get to speak to all of council, but, uh, I spoke to, uh, four or five of members of council. We discussed attempting in-person meetings, starting possibly with the October workshop, which is October 26th in the gymnasium. Uh, we'll see how next week's, uh, swearing in of the new mayor goes. So, yeah, we're going to, we're going to attempt that, assuming COVID stays, local COVID cases stay level, stay low. We're going to give that a try. If anyone objects, let us know between now and then. That's all I have. Anyone have anything for public discussion? Please unmute yourself before you speak. Mr. Dykes, I see you raising your hand. Go ahead, sir. Just take your name and address.
Tom Dykes, 305 West Brookhaven Road. Uh, question for the tie-ins that were done for 315 on West Brookhaven Road. Are those two areas going to be filled in farther? Cause right now when trucks go over, the entire area bounces. And living in one of the older houses that is right there, my house bounces when trucks go over that.
What do you mean tying, tying?
The, where they had to tie in the water and sewer across, across Brookhaven Road.
The, the utilities where they cut out the, uh, cut out the pavement and patched it.
So that was the Chester Water Authority?
Uh, not sure if it was them or if it was actually the developer, one or the other.
Well, that's a question, Mr. Catania, if you can get it.
I'll have somebody, I will have somebody check on that tomorrow.
Thank you, sir. Anything else, Mr. Dykes?
That's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else for public discussion? Please unmute yourself. Going once, going twice, public discussion is closed. With that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good evening, folks. Thank you.